Mayor, we are recording. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate your patience. My apologies for being a couple of minutes late. We're getting too much on our agendas and trying to push some things through, but. My name is Mike Peterson, Mayor. This is Tuesday, December 15th, 2020. It's 7:09 PM, and this is the City of Cottonwood Heights, and this is our business meeting. Begin by reading a determination which states why we're doing this via Zoom virtually rather than in person. And hopefully next year we'll get back to in person. I definitely prefer that. And the determination states pursuant to Utah Code annotated 52-4-2074, the city's mayor as a chair of the city council hereby determines that conducting the meeting of the city council on this day at an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. Is well recognized that a global pandemic currently exists related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, which has the potential to overwhelm Utah's healthcare system. Therefore, due to the state of emergency caused by the global pandemic, I find that conducting a meeting at an anchor location under the current state of public health emergency constitutes substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the location. Therefore, this virtual meeting. We'd now like to have a pledge of allegiance, and I'd like to ask if Councilmember Bruce, would you lead us in that pledge, please?
I'd be happy to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Bruce. The next item on our agenda is our citizen comments. And just a reminder for those who are joining us this evening, if you would like to make comments, ask that you please refrain from any personal attacks and just please be civil in your comments. That's much more effective that way, and we preach that sensitivity. So. Paula, do we have anybody who would like to make a citizen comment?
No one is raising their hands. Oh, there's one.
We do it come.
Megan Seifert.
Go ahead, Megan.
Hi, I just want to make a comment about the Central Wasatch Commission. I'm a bit concerned that they aren't focused on residents, that they're more focused on tourists. I would love for Cottonwood Heights to push for a regionalized plan for the southeast Salt Lake Valley quadrant that features frequent, fast, and free transit pedestrian and cycling that serves all users, skiers, hikers, climbers, commuters, commuters, and locals over building more private car lanes and retrofitting the oceans of asphalt that are already present in strip mall parking lots along Fort Union and 90th and 9400 South. I don't think that parking lots are an answer. And I'm concerned over UDOT's November addendum because it doesn't mention the big Cottonwood Canyon intermodal hub at all. UDOT has a focus on that large parking lot on the structure of the east side of North Little Cottonwood Canyon Road, and that will put more private vehicles through Sandy Granite and Cottonwood Heights neighborhoods. I think that the streets in Cottonwood Heights should emphasize, like, they should be pedestrian and cycling friendly and emphasize traffic calming. I know that in 2019, there was a pledge to keep traffic at 35 miles per hour, but now that's changed, and there's a potential five to seven lane design for Wasatch Boulevard. And I, I don't think that the Central Wasatch Commission is going to keep to Cottonwood Heights' recommendation that only there only be one lane in each direction for car use. McCandless pushed his Canyon Center high-rise project and additional parking lot onto our community, and now Cottonwood Heights is not seeing that he has CW Management Group, which is owned by him and former Senator Niederhauser is a part of this Lakai Gondola project. I think that we should really focus on the interest of the locals over the tourists in this project. And like I said before, that parking lots are not the answer. And that's all.
Thank you, Megan. I appreciate it. And, and I agree with you 100% that our focus should be on, on our constituents and the impact on our city, and that's, that's my personal priority. And appreciate you calling in. Paula, do we have somebody else?
I have Joseph Mike Cross.
Joe, welcome.
Hey, how are you guys doing? I want to wish you guys a Merry Christmas and hope you have a great new year. I watched your business meeting, and I had a couple of comments about the, the development over at the gravel pit.
Okay.
The entrance and exit to Old Wasatch. I don't know if you have any influence over what they do there, but it, that would be a perfect place as a, for a roundabout as opposed to in front of the city hall. Just my opinion. It's, it would be ideal for one. I don't like entering and exiting an intersection on a curve. I hate it at the Murray Costco, although the curve there is different, but still. Anyway, that's just my two cents on that project. I hope you can influence it and make it better. So, yeah.
Thank you, Joe. I know that's whole transportation issue up there has got a lot more discussion to take place. So, thank you. Paula, someone else?
I don't have anyone else, man.
Just wait just a minute. Yeah.
I have Ellen Barrow.
Ellen, welcome, Ellen.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and happy holidays to everyone there in the city hall tonight. Well, I guess we're all virtual. And, yeah, I would like to touch on a few clarifications. Again, my name is Ellen Burrell. I'm the founder of Save Not Pave. And there's a very important distinction that I want to make sure that we're all clear on. And that is that the UDOT is not considering any, their two preferred alternatives for Wasatch Boulevard expansion are not remotely resembling what is in the Wasatch Boulevard master plan. As we know, that is based on one lane of vehicular traffic in each direction. And then the outer two lanes would be for express bus or HOV or, or other uses, but definitely only one private vehicle lane in each direction. And UDOT, what they call their imbalance three lane, is really a five lane, and that is because on, on the shoulders is where they're going to run the express buses. So on those peak traffic times and for commuter peak traffic times, that will be three lanes of vehicular traffic, two going south and one going north, as well as lanes for express buses on either side. And if they were to choose what they call their five lane, it is really seven lanes. This is a very serious distinction. And I think it needs to be really understood by all the people who are affected, which I think is more than just people in Cottonwood Heights. This is a very noisy arterial, and we can have all the wonderful open land. I was so delighted to, to learn that that went through. However, if open land is smothered by the sound of vehicular noise and traffic, how can it really serve the purpose of bringing release and communing with nature? And I would say that because UDOT so flagrantly left their pledges of 2019 to reduce our Wasatch Boulevard expansion to a 35 mile per hour speed design and as a gateway facility, and they have completely stepped away from that, you know, less than a year later, they say, oh, no. We are not promising to get anywhere near 35 miles an hour, and they also are sticking to straightening. And, and as I already mentioned, numerous lanes. I mean, this will more than double the asphalt footprint. So, so it brings, it brings me no comfort. The verbal, you know, we're meeting with them because of their, they've already demonstrated that they are untrustworthy when it comes to, to verbal pledges. And the other thing that I noticed in recent times is that our Cottonwood Heights City Council has strangely become silent on its very, otherwise very vocal plan just earlier this year for an intermodal hub, either in the south or the north end of the gravel pit. And because of that silence, it's allowing for UDOT to run away with the McCandless-Niederhauser proposal that whether it's cog rail or a gondola base, that that will be a huge parking lot, thousands of parking spaces on the east side of North Little Cottonwood Canyon Road. This will induce demand, bring more private vehicles through Sandy Granite and Cottonwood Heights. And, and so no longer is UDOT even talking about Highland Drive and 9400 South and, and this idea of something at the mouth of Big Cottonwood Canyon. Now every, all their preferred alternatives other than the enhanced busing are based on this parking structure, which I, I think will turn Cottonwood Heights into, instead of being a city between two canyons, it's going to be a city where people drive as fast as they can to get to the next parking lot and, or onto the freeway. And I want to just end, if you'll just let me please end. It is completely unacceptable that two Cottonwood Heights citizens in the last three months have been struck, one killed and one seriously injured on in crosswalks. We are not following the master plan set out by our city to create more walkability and bicycling. Instead, parents aren't going to let their children ride their bike or walk with this kind of statistical thing going on. And I think this has got to be addressed. We're going in the wrong direction with the way that we're developing our, our roads and our plans. I hope that you'll address that.
Yeah, Ellen, thank you for your comments, and, and thank you for your attendance at the CWC Transportation Summit, and you've shared many of these same points. And just one quick comment. We are not silent. We've continued to be actively involved with UDOT. We've have, we've probably had three or four meetings in the last month or so, just on those issues of, of transportation, as well as we've met with the landowners up there. I won't, I don't want to get into a lot of dialogue back and forth, but have to say we are not silent and will continue to be.
Well, I would like to.
Very polite. You know, that's, you've had your time. Thank you, Ellen.
I brought it up in our work session today.
Yep. Anyone else who would like to make comment?
Yes, sir. I have Leslie Kova.
Leslie, welcome.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. Happy holidays. I'd like to read a statement. My name is Leslie Kovach. I've been a resident of Cottonwood Heights since 1985. I've lived in my current home on Lost Canyon Circle since 1994. I've watched this area grow and evolve. I've even voted for the incorporation of Cottonwood Heights City because I and the citizens believe that having our own city would allow the residents to have a say in how our city is managed. This would include input and redirection of Wasatch Boulevard into a community-friendly road with manageable speeds, increased safety for the residents, and reduced traffic and noise. In addition, we voted so that we would not have large billboards all over the city, and they could be managed and reduced and discourage distracting light pollution. Sadly, none of this is true. As with the Canyon Center, the north end of the gravel pit coming soon and the south end of the gravel pit, any developer will be allowed to put whatever type of structure, height, density, and lighting design they provide with no regard for the citizens in the community. Makes me wonder why any resident in our city believed that we have regulations and guidelines in our community or that our city has people who live and work here. We are not a parking lot between the canyons or a freeway. Yet a faster way to get to I-215. The talk of the current expansion of Wasatch Boulevard appears to be motive to, to line McCandless and Niederhauser's pockets and create a freeway to a parking lot at Lakai, which will rob Cottonwood Heights of its sense of community. This is not surprising. They did the same thing with the Canyon Center, another McCandless and Niederhauser named name that they rammed through. I personally walked my neighborhood this summer to get a petition signed to reduce the signage and the lighting on this project with over 60% of the residents willing to sign the petition. But what was really important about the fact is that all the residents I spoke with felt the expansion of Wasatch Boulevard has and will affect them negatively and their property. Prospector Hill is one small neighborhood of 73 homes, of which they started about 750,000 and go up to several million dollars. They are taxpayers. They feel disenfranchised by Cottonwood Heights. Imagine how the rest of the homeowners along and near Wasatch Boulevard feel about having their homes they chose to live in, devalued by the city and the council. I asked the city council and the mayor to stand up for the citizens of Cottonwood Heights against UDOT developers and the ski resorts. Should widening of Wasatch continue, the residents will pay for the noise, the congestion, the traffic, and the actions of our city and council and mayor need to stand up for the people who live here, who love to live here, who want to live here, and would like to continue to live here. That is my statement.
Leslie, thank you very much. And Steve's Play Connected and continue to communicate with us. I appreciate your concerns and your issues you've raised. Thank you. Paula, do we have someone else?
I have Terry Heinrich. Let me, oh, I lost my cursor. Give me just a second. Terry, you're on.
Hi, I'm Terry Heinrich, and I ride my bike along Wasatch Boulevard, and I also walk there quite frequently. And I am concerned about the speed of the traffic. And when the woman was killed in the crosswalk, that bothered me a lot. And, and when I'm walking, I always walk against the traffic so I can see the cars coming at me and towards me in case I have to jump out of the way. So I just think that it's a dangerous road, and I just don't think that we need to have the speed limit higher. We need to lower it and just need to, you know, know that this is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. And I think the council is pretty, been pretty consistent in that we agree that those speed limits need to be lowered rather than raised, for sure. Paula, anyone else?
Not right now, sir.
Wait just a minute.
I have Anna McNamara.
Welcome, Anna.
Thank you, Mike. Um, I'm here to point out that actively engaged in the conversation is different than actively opposing UDOT being the voice of our community. Our community has come out time and time again and reminded that our representatives to please follow our master plan, which emphasizes walkability, which emphasizes de-escalation of speeds, which emphasizes enjoying biking and that slow movement in our small city. When we are allowing a highway to be built through our canyons and through our community, you know, we're really removing that sense of a small town. When my family moved to Cottonwood Heights, we moved here and we talked to our neighbors and our family, encouraged them, moved to Cottonwood Heights. It's a small-town feel in the middle of a big city. As we think about increasing our speeds, expanding our roads, putting up more billboards, adding to that light pollution, well, so many of us who enjoy living here, and so many of us who have moved to this small town between the canyons have those joys removed, the quality of life decreased, and our homes devalued. It's really important that our representatives are representing our voices, standing up to Utah, UDOT, and standing up to some of those bigger names in politics who just want to build more, develop more, take their money, and not be active members of our small communities. So I'm asking our city council to represent us in the midst of all these different voices. Please listen to your residents. In addition to that, I would like to talk about Quicksilver Drive at the mouth of Ferguson Canyon. Tonight, you guys are going to vote, and 15 residents at the mouth of Ferguson Canyon are going to determine the trailhead for the rest of the state. Ferguson Canyon is a historically popular trail. By permitting those roads around Ferguson, we decrease the total amount of spaces that people are allowed to park. As people move up from the lower parking area, we're going to have dogs running through people's homes. And since the only street that isn't permit is, is Quicksilver, an older road, a smaller road, not only are those residents going to see increased traffic and congestion, but because it's a smaller road, that risk is increased as well. I'm asking that instead of granting those permits, that the city council first tries signage. We can come up with creative solutions as a community, but we have to try small things before we try these big drastic measures. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. A lot of, a lot of good comments, and appreciate hearing those and reminding us again of what some of the priorities are that we're focusing on. Paula, anyone else?
No, sir.
Okay, wait just a minute. Okay, we'll close our citizen comment period of our agenda and now move to open a public hearing on our budget amendment for 2020-2021. And we'll ask our fiscal services director, Scott Jurgis, to introduce that, and then we will be taking some public comments regarding our budget amendment for those who would like to speak to it. Scott, go ahead.
Mayor, I think I'm going to present this tonight.
Oh, I, I thought I knew that. I did know it, but I just see Scott's name on the agenda, so, yeah.
Okay. Anyway, this item has been noticed through the public process that we're required to go through for a budget amendment. It includes two items, one in the capital improvement fund, which is a heat to place heat and have a contractor do the work to place heat in the public workshop, does two things. It allows for a more conducive environment for our staff as they are doing 90% of the maintenance of equipment for our public works department. And it also allows for a more timely response and expedited, expedited dispatch really for snow plowing and emergency situations. The second portion of this is the compensation adjustment proposal. This is something that we talked about in the spring, as I mentioned in the work session with our benefits and compensation committee as part of our budget process. As we were going, in the process of going through the pandemic, the benefits and compensation committee recommending moving forward with adjustments when there is a clearer picture, a budget picture especially related to revenues, the city council adopted the budget with that recommendation and to move forward and look at this as we have more clear picture of the revenues. So we talked about this in October, November. We brought this forward for council consideration. The council directed staff to have the budget adjustment on the October or December 15th meeting, which is where we're at. And that's what's before you tonight. The adjustments really include two components. One is a market adjustment, which, which brings positions within market, and then a merit increase, which is performance adjustment within the market range. And I feel this proposal is very important for our staff, and really, I want to express appreciation for what they do for our community. There is so much that they do and, and so much good work to better our community, and I appreciate their efforts. So we're recommending approval of this budget adjustment at this time prior to the public hearing.
Thank you, Tim, and we'll now open the public hearing. Paula, is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding the budget amendment?
I don't have any raised hands, sir.
Just wait just a moment and. Okay, hearing that there's no public comments during, regarding this public hearing, I'm, we'll close the public hearing and now move to 5.0 on your agenda, which is staff reports. We have an annual report by our city auditors, Larson and Company.
Mayor, this is Scott Jurgis. We're having, we're coordinating with John Hatterley, who is our auditor. He's has another city council meeting at the same time as this one. If you're okay, if we go into the CAFER presentation, and then when John is able to join us, we can have him do his report if that would be okay.
That's absolutely fine. So Scott, you and Mike, go ahead. Okay.
Dave's going to chime in here when needed as well. So the, the CAFER was completed. Dave does the lion's share of the work on assembling that data, getting it into a format that allows it to be presented with all of the required documentation.
Scott, would, would you, would you take a minute, explain to people what the CAFER is? I mean, I, I mean, our audience out there may not know what it is. I mean, I've done it for years, but yeah, tell them what the CAFER is. It's an acronym.
And, and Dave, feel free to walk in and correct me if I go down a wrong path, but CAFER stands for Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And that is basically, it's the proper way it's outlined by the Government Finance Officers Association and by Government Accounting Standards Board of how to present the finances of a governmental entity in the, in the United States. Also, many other countries utilize the same format because they don't have as many standards, and so they utilize the United States as the basis for that. It has several requirements. Some of them are the basic financial statements that we utilize, but some of the other items are management write-ups, auditor reports, which are required no matter whether you do a full comprehensive annual financial report. It includes notes to outline and describe accounting policies, practices, and other things. It includes statistical sections to be able to go out and, and review historical basis for things such as maybe revenues, how many miles of lane roads that we have for year-over-year, police statistics, all kinds of different things that are included in there so that you can kind of get an, an idea of what our city is about as you review that through the course of, you know, the years that, that we do. And if you're going to want to do any comparisons to other cities, that information is in there to help with, you know, that comparison process if that's what you're wanting to do. Dave, would you add anything else to that? Dave, you're still on mute.
No, you pretty well covered it. The only thing I would bring to people's attention is that we follow the CAFER guidelines that the GFOA, as you mentioned, outlines. And we submit it each year for review, peer review, and each year we have submitted it, we have received an acceptable or approved peer review. And so on, on page BI, right before page one, you'll see the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And that's the acknowledgement that we are following the standards and on a competitive. Yep, right there, right there, that we're following the standards and the peer review has not found any major exceptions. And then the only other thing, you've mentioned there's a statistical section. I think that is an area where a lot of people might get a lot of interest because it gives 10 years of history. So you can see costs and, and it's on page 75 is where it starts. But various different statistical analyses over 10 years. Prior to that, a new section, these are RSI areas. These are fairly new in the last three to five year, three years, really, maybe four years. But they've had us now start including our pension liability and schedule of contributions for pension. Those are on page 68 and 69. So those are some of the, the changes or the highlights that I So those are some of the the changes or the highlights that I would point out.
And if I could just add a couple of items, some of the areas that I find very valuable um and areas where we get a lot of questions from our, our, well, a lot of people, we get them from board members as well as others. We can find this information on, starting on page thirty. This is basically the balance sheet for the general fund, the capital projects fund, the debt service fund and the CDRA fund. And so you can see right down here, if you go to um the line, you can see total fund balances right here across the board there. And then you can see the unassigned portion. So in the general fund, we have a a fund balance of five million four hundred and eighty thousand, of which eighty-six thousand is is uh prepaid for the next year. And the remaining amount is the PTO vested as five hundred and thirteen thousand six twenty-eight right there, leaving this amount available um for the next year. But you can see that in each of our funds, what's going on with uh the various amounts there. And then um Fund thirty-two or page thirty-two is a good one because it shows you the revenues that come in. It shows you the expenditures going out and then any other uh sources and uses of funds. Again, coming down to reconciling to from beginning fund balance to ending fund balance for the year so that you can see that um as you're going through. And then one other um item, this is specifically to the general fund, and this is page thirty-four, where it goes through again, our adopted budget, our final budget, that includes any adjustments that we made through the year, our fund actuals on a, on the budgetary basis, and then our variances. And uh as we go through that, and I think
Scott writes it on page thirty-four. I think it's important to note that our fund balance grew to one point seven million. Is that correct?
Um, yes.
And going through into next year, I think that's important to note, yeah.
Yes, and that's um largely due to the the other cares funding that we received in there, um not only due to that, but is largely due to that, so.
A clarification, I think I heard one point seven.
You're right.
Additional balance, it's only one point one.
Yes.
It's a variance with budget of one point seven.
Yeah, a positive variance to our budget of one point seven.
Right.
With about um seven hundred thousand of that due to the cares funding that was unexpected when we were um closing the year out. And then the other million being what we've talked about in the past as we've gone through um that stuff, yes.
Scott, uh John has joined the Zoom call.
Okay.
Let's go ahead and finish this. And if you go on to the next page, page thirty-five, I think it's important to note too uh the balance of our uh CDRA. And I know we're still waiting for clarification uh from our uh our council as to what those funds can be used for, but there's what, one point nine? Is that what it is?
There, this is approximately the amount that is available to us in there. This one doesn't really show the amount. If we go back up here to this one, we can see in our CDRA fund. But let's go one more bit, sorry. In our CDRA fund, you can see that we have a current balance of one point nine million dollars. Of that, about two hundred and four thousand is related to the early trigger of the um of the the um tax increment financing area up there, the canyon center. And then the remaining amount, the million seven sixty, that is the amount that um is available that is being reviewed by the law firm. I can't remember the name of the law firm.
And sorry, Scott, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, I I saw in, I think it was the either today's uh packet or the council communication that there's some discussion about that two hundred thousand dollars may needing to go back to the taxing entity. Can you, because of the trigger date, can you help me under, I just didn't understand what that meant, can you?
So, and I don't know the exact process, but somehow the triggered, the the thing was, the tax area was triggered early. Uh and I don't remember the year, might have been sixteen. Do you remember, Tim?
It was two thousand fifteen. And so we, there was the trigger of the, of the area, but when we renegotiated with the taxing entities and re renegotiated and redid the um uh agreement, um we pushed the trigger date back, so that will occur, I believe, next year. And so the question of those two, that two hundred and four thousand is what? What happens with that where we renegotiated and pushed that back? And that's what we're talking to the taxing entities about right now.
That, could you add a little bit more color though? Because I thought in the communications that you had said that it may have to, I mean, so that that money is, we have that money, but we may need to give it back.
Yeah, we may, we may need to disperse it back to them. They're, they're looking at that and reviewing that with their legal counsel. Or it can be utilized um as part of the projects, the what, the reimbursements that we have within the project area, and then they can end, potentially end the area sooner. So we're trying to get clarification on that from the taxing entities.
So meaning like that money could go back to the developer to use on that project or just the agent, the the different taxing entities and their pro rata share?
Yeah, it it would go, it would actually, it it could either go back to the taxing entities with their pro rata share, what you're talking about, or go towards what the reimbursements are in the development agreement. And so those reimbursements include the city as a portion for the park area. It includes the developers is down further. There's there's a reimbursement back to the uh school district, I believe. There's a number of different things that that would go towards per our development agreement.
Thank you.
And then this will be an item that will come up um when our auditor does his presentation. In the, as we do our budgets, they don't just compare our budgets to the general fund in total. They compare our budgets in these four groups that are outlined right here. So we kinda have our, our, our city government split up into four groups. General government, which would include the general administrative areas, um mayor, council, finance, IT, uh HR, city manager, city attorney, et cetera, public safety, which would include uh police, fire and um and animal and uh ordinance um enforcement, public high highways and public improvements, which we often refer to as public works, and then community and economic development. And in our, we were, we ran over budget by thirty-one thousand dollars within the public works area, and I'll explain that in just a moment. But in our total general fund, we were under budget, just under a hundred or six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And just to kind of put some clarity on that, when we were developing our budget for this year, if you'll remember, we used to contract for our city and our public works engineer. And then we brought that position in-house. So when we set up our budget this year here, we have a savings of about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars built into this number for our budget. And you'll see that the budget doesn't change throughout the year. It stays the same. As we went through the year, part of the um contract that we had with the contract engineer was that there was a three-month uh cancellation window. So we had to give ninety-day notice and continue to pay during that time. And we brought on the new engineer in July, and then we um gave the notice to that engineer once we were finished our budget process uh last year. And then we had to pay that contract engineer through September. And so that ended up being a cost to us of about seventy thousand dollars. I think it was seventy-one thousand some odd dollars. And so we incurred that cost, knowing that we were not budgeted to incur that cost throughout the year. But also knowing that we would likely be able to um have our budget absorb that additional cost. You can see that in total, we were able to absorb that cost in terms of our general fund. However, dur- in the specific budget allocated to public works, we actually exceeded that by thirty-one thousand dollars. So we managed to absorb a little more than half of that cost in our public works budget. So we, we ran this over. We knew that this was going to occur. Um and and we had talked about this um a time or two um within our, our, the management staff. Then, as we were going through the year, we were kind of monitoring to see where that would go. And all of a sudden, when COVID hit us and we had March come along, this kind of became a little bit of a backburner item and we, we kinda, it wasn't, we totally forgot about it. We were worried about other things that were kind of a little more pressing at the time, trying to figure things out both budgetarily, compensation, just all kinds of different things, whether or not there was gonna be cares funding, because this was in all that timeframe. And during that, we never did come back and readdress this and reallocate any of our existing budget to cover this overage. So this overage here of the thirty-one thousand three twenty-one becomes a, a finding in our budget that we have, that be is, that is an exception to our budget. And and John will go over that when he uh talks about the uh report that they have momentarily. But I just wanted to bring that up because this is where you can see that particular item there. But I want to assure you that indeed, we are saving money by having uh city engineering brought in-house versus having that contracted. Um during the transition, we did have to incur a little bit of extra cost, but in an ongoing basis. And even in this year, we're continuing to save money over what we uh used to pay prior to this. I don't really have any other specific items that I wanted to say. Um I don't know if now would be a good time to have John go ahead and give his um presentation. And then if you have any additional questions to either John or myself or Dave, you, we can go to there.
Cool, does that mean I'm on?
You're on, John.
All right. Well, thanks, Mayor Council, for this drop into your meeting a little bit. Apologize, I was a little bit late. I was, I was in another council meeting. Um and they were talking about things that were not really relevant, so they were going along. I'm sure you guys know how that is when you get off topic and anyway, so we appreciate the time that that we're able to come and uh present our audit to you, well, your audit, but our findings. We have a a really good relationship with the city. Um it's always a pleasure to come and do the audit. Um we've worked with Dave for quite a number of years now and um Dave's seems like he's always on top of things and um I think he tries to test us a little bit every year and every time I bring somebody new, I think he tries to confuse them, but that's a good thing. It makes my staff even better. All right, so Scott, I don't know if you wanna share your screen again and put those financial statements back up.
I, I can do that.
And then if you just turn to page five of the PDF.
Do you wanna be on the CAFER or on your report?
Uh, CAFER first.
Okay.
I'm actually on the wrong one, too. I better switch over.
Oh, you wanna be on five of the PDF, sorry?
No, fifteen, sorry. Page fifteen, yeah.
Fifteen of the PDF.
Yeah, and it's actually page nine. All right, so this is our audit report. Um we finalized the audit for Cottonwood Heights as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty. This is a pretty standard report. Anytime you see an audit, whether it's in you know, a, a public company, private company, they're all laid out virtually the same. There are a few differences just because it's a government. Um but just a few wording changes. Uh they're laid out a specific way. Um the, and the, and the wording is very uh, it it's actually required verbiage. So this isn't something that we create internally. Um this is, you know, an audit report based on standards that we live by. Um and I just wanted to point out just that first paragraph, management's responsibility for the financial statements. This comes first before our opinion and before our responsibilities. Uh because a few years ago, um there seemed to be some confusion um when audits would be issued as to who is responsible for the financial statements. And it's always been management's responsibility. But the way the audit report used to read, um some people were getting confused as to, okay, well, is this the auditor's financial statements? And and they're putting them together for us. And so, you know, they're, they're taking responsibility for them, but the financial statements are actually your responsibility as a city and management of the city. Um and and management is, you know, required to know how to, to prepare the financial statements, how to use the correct accounting principles that are accepted in um generally accepted accounting principles or GAAP, as we call it in, in our world. Um and then our responsibility is to take your financial statements. So in a perfect world, we would take a set of your financial statements and then we would break it down into the trial balance. Um which is basically the financial statements inside your computer system. And then we further break that down into different sections, whether it's cash, whether it's revenue, whether it's transfers, whether it's fund balance, capital assets, things like that. And then we break down those numbers into individual balances that we form tests around. And we test those individ- individual balances so that we can come to a, an, an opinion. Uh we use a variety of different tests to be able to test those balances. We might use third-party confirmations. Um we do predictive tests, we do high efficient analytics. We do some data analytics um to extrapolate data. We do predictive tests or recalculations, um all sorts of different tests. And that's part of what we do is, in our audit, is really just assign specific tests to specific balances that we feel will give us the best results. And we believe that the audit evidence that we obtained during our test work um is sufficient and appropriate to provide a basis for audit opinion. Um and that's that little smart, small paragraph right before the opinion paragraph. And in the opinion paragraph, we state our opinion. So this is the first opinion that we give during our audit, and this is on your financial statements. And our opinion is an unmodified opinion or an unqualified opinion. Um that means that there were no issues. Um there were no misstatements that that we felt were material um enough to, you know, either qualify an opinion or give an adverse opinion. But the specific wording is the financial statements referred to above re-present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of um Cottonwood Heights for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty. So w- we always say, um you know, all material respects. And I know in the audit committee meeting this morning, we had a, a discussion about this with with the mayor, but you know, in my world, materiality kind of rules how we do things. If for us to give a for assurance or or an absolute, it would be way too time-consuming and way too expensive to have something like done, that done where we're looking at transactions down to the, the very penny. So in our world, we, we rely on materiality. Um and those materiality balances vary significantly even within the city. So we, we might have, you know, ten materiality levels while we're doing the audit, depending on what fund we're looking at. Um and also what group of accounts we're looking at. Scott, if you wanna go to the next page. Uh just wanna quickly point out that there's a couple of sections in the financial statements that don't fall under our opinion that we don't opine on. Um and that is the management's discussion and analysis and, and also um the required supplementary inform- or, sorry, the yeah, the required supplemental information related to the URS pensions. So that would be your schedule of contributions and your schedule of your net pension, your, your portion of the net pension liability. Um those are both ten-year schedules. Um and it shows your contributions over the last ten years as well as what your share of the net pension liability is. So those sections, um even though they're contained with the financial report, are not a part of the basic financial statements. And the reason why they're there is because Gatsby says um that they provide more background and more readability and understandability to the financial statements. So if, if you don't really like getting inside the numbers and 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 you don't like reading the, the actual you know, face of the financial statements or the notes, the management's discussion analysis is a really good place to read. It gives an overview of the financial statements, almost like a Reader's Digest version. And it gives comparative data to last year. It summarizes the financial statements in a way that's, that's very readable. Um it's, it's almost like a layman's uh you know, lame, in layman's terms, what the, what's contained in the financial statements. And then also there's supplementary information. So that's the, the capital projects budget. And then the introductory section and the statistical sections of the CAFER. So those are considered supplementary. So those are considered supplementary. The reason why that they're supplementary is those are not required under Gatsby, but the city's chosen number one to do a a full Caffer. And also any supplementary information that you decide that you want to have within the financial statements. Typically, it's if you have multiple funds and those funds are non major or. In the in for you specifically, the budget schedule for your capital projects. Because that's not a required schedule, but the city's chosen to include that in the financial statements. It goes in the supplementary section. And and. Our opinion, the opinion on that, those that section always follows the audit opinion. So you can read that small paragraph right near the bottom, right above other reporting. So the introductory and statistical sections have not been subjected to auditing procedures applied in the audit of the basic financial statements. And accordingly, we we express. We do not express an opinion or provide assurance on them. And then the line right above it. The budget schedule, the capital project fund is fairly stated in all material respects in relation to the basic financial statements as a whole. So we tie that schedule down and make sure that it ties back to the accounting records. Even though we don't specifically opine on that, we make sure that it ties down. That bottom paragraph. Just reiterates that we we performed the audit in accordance with government auditing standards. There are different tests. That we do in government audits versus if we were to audit a private company or nonprofit or a public company. Government has its own specific set of guidelines. And part of those guidelines are that we look at your internal controls. We don't give an opinion on your internal controls, but we do. Look at the internal controls. We go through your processes. We sit down with your staff and we do walkthroughs. And identify key areas and key controls that are in place and make sure that they're functioning. The purpose of that, like I said, is not to give an opinion. But really, that helps us form tests. So if you if we find out that you have a weakness in internal control, we actually expand our testing. To be able to come to the same reasonable assurance and the same risk level as if you had very good internal controls. In any one area. All right, Scott, if you want to flip over to page, well, flip over to the other report. You can skip this. So this is the government auditing standards report that I was just referring to. And that just reiterates that we look at your internal controls, so we don't need to spend any time on that one. The second report is the second, the state compliance report. This report is required by the state auditor. Those areas indented in the in the center of the page are the areas that we were required to look at. So we looked at your budgetary compliance, your fund balance, the justice courts. Any restricted money that you get, we make sure that you spend that appropriately. Open and Public Meetings Act, we make sure that you're in compliance with that act. And then the fraud risk assessment, which is a new one this year, that I think that that Dave and Scott can talk to you about that. So we looked at those areas. We're limited on what we're required to look at. We only look at what the state auditor feels is either a continued risk for the cities in the state of Utah. Or if it's a new compliance requirement. Or or if it's something that they've had significant problems with in the recent past. This by no means gives the city an out as far as being in compliance with all of state code. I always throw that caveat in there. Because, you know, just because we don't test it doesn't mean that you don't have to be in compliance with it. But our opinion on your compliance, so this is the second opinion that we give. During our audit. So we give an opinion on the financial statements. And then also an opinion on your compliance with these requirements. And our opinion is really limited to these requirements that we were required to look at. And in our opinion, Cottonwood Heights complied in all material respects with the compliance requirements with contained in the state compliance audit guide. So Scott already mentioned that there is one compliance finding. And the reason why it's actually at the very end, instead of contained in that letter is because it wasn't material. And it really didn't significantly affect your financial. Either your financial records or. A material non compliance that that. Would really have an effect on you operating as a city. So if we felt like it was significant and it was material, then we would actually include it. As a significant deficiency or a material weakness inside of that state compliance audit report. But but as it is, you know, Scott mentioned that. The highways and public improvements department exceeded budget for the period. He discussed, you know, the the. The cause of what happened. I don't foresee this as an ongoing problem. You know, when when we talked about it and it was explained to us, I was very comfortable. This is not an uncommon thing to happen. So I I feel like this is. Something that can be, you know, rectified almost immediately, and and I don't expect this to be a problem in the future. One thing that I will point out is on the financial statements. If you're not really familiar with governmental financial statements, anything that's a governmental fund. Is never reported by natural classification. So a natural classification is if you go out and you read a private company's financial statements, you'll see. You know, typically at the top, you're going to see revenue and then you're going to see cost of goods sold, then you're going to see. You know, salaries and wages, supplies, phone telephone expenses. Things that we would classify if we're doing our own, you know, bank reconciliation. You know, how we would typically categorize expenditures is really what they're used for. In governmental funds, it's all about the function. So that's why they're grouped into general government, public safety, highways. Things like that, because those expenditures are related to that function. And when we're looking at the budget, we actually don't look at. Just the groups on your financial statements. We will break it down. To the very department. So we will look at council department. We will look at the police department. We will look at. You know, if there's like an attorney department, I'm trying to remember all the departments in my head. That you guys have, but but we actually, so the the code states. That it it in the general fund is really broken down. You have to be within budget within the department. And a lot of people overlook that. They think that, well, if we're in, we're good if we're in in but within budget in our whole general fund. But the reason why the general fund is broken down by department is it's kind of a culmination of your entire government. There are so many different components within the within the general fund. And all of your other governmental funds are really just supplemental funds that are doing something different. Like your capital projects is specifically for capital projects, so it doesn't really relate to any one function. If you have a special revenue fund, it's set up specifically for that revenue. So the general fund is kind of the catchall of. Of of all of your governmental operations in the city. And so that's why it's broken down by department in and what we look at. When we're doing the test work is you have to be within budget in every department. So. That being said, I I I don't see it as a major concern. I don't think it's a material finding. And and I'm comfortable with this not being an ongoing issue.
May I clarify? Just for everyone's edification, general government is the department. And then all the activities, the mayor's office or in the city. You know, activities, finance, attorney. All of the things that are inside of general government are kind of technically an activity. They're not a department. And so these are the only departments, so these four. So police and fire are all in one department. Under public safety. It's just the. The wording. Just to make sure that people understand, department is not. The activity.
Yeah. So, yeah, and I wanted to point out that that's why it's not by natural function. It's actually contained within. You know, that's why your income statement is going to say general government, public safety, highways, instead of. Hey, here's the salaries and wages. Here's the. Here's our, you know, materials expenses. Here's our supplies, things like that. So. That's all I had. I I felt like the audit went very smoothly. I commend Dave for putting the financial statements together. He did a good job. Thanks, Scott, for, you know. Really making our audit go smoothly. All the information that we we requested, whether it was from. Tim, whether it was from Scott, whether it's from Dave or Candy. We got the information within, you know, that day. I usually get concerned when my staff come to me and and tell me that they've requested information and it's been, you know, two or three days. That's where I started to get a little bit concerned. But that wasn't the case in our audit. I I feel like everything went smooth and there weren't any disagreements that we had with management. So, well done on a another year of audit.
John, let me ask you a quick question, and I think we're out of time. And of course, we'll allow the council's question. Again, you're very complimentary and not saying there's any. Material issues. Is is that? Is that typical? I mean, when you. Audit many other cities, is this? At the higher end as far as being. Well done, or is this the norm or what?
It's kind of a hard question to answer because it's it's like comparing apples to oranges. I will I will say that that. The audit is very is very smooth. It's very, it's it's wonderful that, you know, Dave addressed the financial statements. He has a very good understanding of. Of, you know, government accounting principles, how how things need to to go. So that that part of it makes our audit work a lot simpler. You know, as far as, you know, any findings go. You know, if if we really wanted to get nitpicky, I'm sure we could find something to give a finding on every year. I'm just not that way. You know, I feel like everybody's trying to do their best and and if there's issues that I feel like need to be addressed. I would probably say. You know, compliance issues are going to happen. I mean, there's going to be, you know, oversights because, you know, you guys are all busy. And and things happen, just like this budget finding, you know, it was. This whole covid year has been an absolute turn everybody upside down. And so. You know, those kind of things, they happen and we're required to report them. The more concerning issue that I would have is if we had an an internal control finding where we found something in internally that we felt was significant enough to warrant a finding. Then that's where I would say I would be a little bit more concerned and and address that more. More quickly and and probably focus more on those. But as far as the city goes, you know, you really do have a good structure and you have good internal controls. I don't want to pat you on the back too much because I don't want you to get lackadaisical and then, you know, kind of. You know, allow something to happen because you're not paying attention to your internal controls. But. As far as other cities go, I I think that this is one of our smoothest audits. So, you know, take that for what it's worth.
Yep, no, that's that. That's exactly what I was just wondering. That's well stated. Thank you.
So.
And we don't want to take it for granted. We want to continue to be efficient and thorough. So. Appreciate that feedback. Counsel, any questions or comments?
I just think Scott and Dave have done a fabulous job. We went over this this morning and. Quite impressive. We can always try to look at. Little, a little bit of fine tuning and different things on that, but I think they've done a splendid job from everything I've seen.
Thank you, Councilman Peterson. Yeah, the audit committee did meet this morning for an hour and a half and reviewed a lot of the same information. So. Appreciate that and and we'll move forward. Any other comments, questions?
Well, thank you to Scott and Dave both. It's nice to consistently have good, clean audits. And award winning budgets and both the Caffers and the other and the GFOA awards. That's always a point of pride.
So, you know, to that and. Scott, any final comments?
Yeah, just a couple of items that I wanted to introduce. This year, there was a new report that was required along with our financial statements to. The state auditor's office, and that is a fraud risk assessment. And this is a copy of that fraud risk assessment. We haven't yet turned it in. We just reviewed that with the audit committee this morning and we'll turn this in in the next couple of days. But this goes through different control aspects of our of our city. How we handle different things, whether we have policies in place, whether we have processes in place. Whether our management team has, you know, proper credentials in terms of education and so on and so forth. And out of all of these things that are on this list, the only item that we really don't have is a formal audit function and and.
Internal audit.
Yeah, formal, sorry, formal internal audit function. Yeah, thank you for that clarification. And this is something that both Dave and myself have the ability and the training to be able to do. Dave specifically is a certified internal auditor. And then former jobs has performed an internal audit function. And so it's something that we can put something together and we'll look to doing that so that we can satisfy this requirement here. On this fraud risk assessment. One of the things about this fraud risk assessment assessment is it's kind of like a light. It's either on or it's off. You either get all the points or you don't get all the points. And we had to talk about that this morning that, you know, in real world, it is possible to get partial points. And so how but how this is set up, it's all or nothing. And so basically. The areas we got all the points in, it's not saying that we do those things perfectly, but we have something in place to satisfy the requirement. We are aware of these items and we are constantly trying to improve our procedures to be better and better all the time. Specifically on internal audit, we'll get better on that to where we can hopefully get that those points next year. And we'll work on that. Up here, number one is, does the entity have adequate separation of duties or mitigating mitigating controls? As outlined in the basic separation of duties questionnaire. Well, that is on page two here. Where it talks about different separation of duties. Different, sometimes people who need to do their things differently, sometimes. You know, different processes that we have in place to be able to handle things. And we do, we and we're able to answer yes straight down. Number three is the only item where we have what's called mitigating controls where. We may have the same person in this case. Over customer accounts as well as being able to collect cash. And that's how our front counter is is set up with built, say, building permits and or say, animal. Licensing fees, other things like that that come in over that front counter. And but we have mitigating controls to be able to prevent any. Control fraudulent control type issues up there with that. But just wanted to make you aware that we are constantly looking at these different things. The state auditor's office is requesting this information. The our external auditor looks at these items when they come in. And and they get looked at from a number of different angles throughout the course of this. And we're constantly, like I said, trying to make ourselves better and better all the time. That's about all I have on the Caffer. I would like to just make mention that our budget document was a little bit. Long in coming this year due to all the recent stuff with our. Cares funds and other things, but it's all completed and Paula sent that out to each of you today. And I wanted to make you aware that that's completed. It's one hundred and thirty four pages long, very similar to what the the Caffer is in terms of number of pages. Another good source of information for you to look at as you look through the year, but this will. We haven't yet printed it because literally I got this done yesterday, but I will get a printed copy for each of you. And then it will be available. We'll have it put out on the website probably tomorrow and have that available there.
I was going to just make one comment about the segregation of duties, just for clarification. When you have good segregation of duties, you basically have good transparency. So that things can't be hidden. And that's the reason for it. Perfect. Something we want. So thank you. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Scott. Any any final comments from the council with respect to these reports? All right, we're going to move forward. And I think as John left, we appreciate his attendance tonight as well, our outside auditor. Now moving to your.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead. Thank you. Oh, I forgot you had that funny letter on.
I had I had to do that before I left, just for you.
Yeah.
Thanks again.
Thank you, John. Item six point O, which is action items. The first item is six point one, which is approving an amendment to our. Twenty twenty dash twenty twenty one budget. Tim, I know you've talked about it, introduced it for the public hearing, but if you want to briefly introduce it again, be appropriate. Tim, I know you've talked about it, introduced it for the public hearing, but if you want to briefly introduce it again, be appropriate.
Yeah, as I've mentioned, it, it contains two items. Um, it relates to the capital improvement fund for improvements to the public works heat. Heard the shop to place heat in there. And then the general fund, um, that's in the amount of twenty-one thousand. Then the general fund, it's the compensation increases. Um, which is a partial year, half the year from January to June. And the expense on that's three hundred and four thousand, one hundred and twenty-three. We're recommending approval of this budget amendment at this time.
Thank you. Just my note and uh, Riley will relate to this. This, this morning at the United Fire Authority Board Meeting, uh, they took basically the same approach we did, which was several months ago froze things, but then today they also adopted a January one adjustment uh, and, and talked about other cities that were following the same suit. So appreciate that consistency there. Any further comments uh, regarding uh, item uh, ordinance item three fifty-one?
Yes, Mayor, when we uh, were working on the budget, um, just as COVID hit, we had a lot of concerns. I appreciate our employees' willingness to be patient. We promised them at that time that we would have this discussion um, in the fall. I am glad that we did and that we've been able to uh, come good on that promise. I'm also good that our revenues have not lagged nearly as far as we had feared. Um, and that allows us to be able to make uh, this adjustment, both of these cases for the benefits of our employees. Um. With that being said, I would uh, move that we approve ordinance three fifty-one.
Okay, it's removed by Councilor Bracken. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
It's been seconded by uh, Councilmember Peterson. Any further comments or questions from the council?
I would just echo what Scott said. We really appreciate the staff being patient as we went through some scary unpredictable times.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Bruce. And, and, and uh, again, as we go through the next budget cycle, this uh, will all be looked at again based on the information through our benefits and compensation committee and the budget committee. And uh, we'll go to that point. Any further comments, questions? Uh, just one final comment is I think is all, I've heard from all of our council members at different times this year. That is appreciation for our staff and uh, their willingness to continue to work hard through, through challenging times. And the thing that impressed me most too about that budget Scott referred to is the amount of underspent in addition to the revenue holding forward. So uh, being conservative and efficient uh, was noted as well. So we appreciate that. Okay, I'll call for the vote. Uh. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Michael.
Uh, yes.
And I will vote yes. The next item is Resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-six, declaring a certain property surplus. Uh. Mr. Juergens, you're gonna introduce that real quickly?
Yes, um, we have, get to my right paper here. We, as, as a process of changing out our vehicles, um, we have some um, modems that we had utilized in our vehicles for a number of years and they're getting to the point where they're older and and not, not always as uh, up to date and everything as we would want. Those modems, we have thirty-seven of them are available. Um, and still, these thirty-seven are still in working order. And some entities like to pick these up to replace ones that are broken, that are similar in their um, fleets of whatever they've got that they're utilizing these modems to, in their vehicles. And so we would like to take these and utilize eBay and the, and the bid process in eBay to distribute these items um, throughout the, likely the country and whatever to whatever entities uh, can utilize these so that we can re- recoup some of these um, funds back. And then the funds would come back to us in the form of a revenue in the general fund um, when they would sell. And so um, we, they would be recommended to do that, but they're the, the modems that were installed in the police vehicles that we just recently turned out.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions or comments regarding uh, surplusing that property? Hearing that, I'd consider a uh, motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-six.
I move that we approve twenty twenty dash fifty-six.
It's been moved by Councilmember Peterson. Do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded by Councilmember Bruce. Any further comments or questions? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. Uh, Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Next item is Resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-seven. It's consenting to reappointments to the Historic Committee of uh, uh, Paul Benner, Gal Conger, and Carol Woodside. I think you had a brief resume or description of these individuals uh, in your packets. Tim, you want to introduce that any further or Councilmember Bruce? I mean, you know these people as well.
Uh, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Tim.
I, I will just say that these are wonderful individuals that love this and are passionate about this work uh, on the Historic Committee. And a- as I mentioned earlier, I'm excited that they're willing to continue and I think they do a great job in recommending approval.
Yeah, they're a huge asset. I think we're very fortunate as a city to have such quality people.
Thank you, the most of you. And I know uh, those people as well and have worked with them over the years and uh, outstanding residents and willing to serve. So appreciate that service. Uh, entertain a motion for adoption of uh, Resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-seven.
So moved.
It's moved by Councilmember Bruce. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Bracken. Any final comments, questions? Hearing that, I'd call for the vote. Uh, Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Last item is uh, Resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-eight. Uh, designating a portion of Prospector Drive as a parking permit area only. Um. Is Mike Johnson still with us?
Yes.
Oh, there he is. God, I came to see him. Yeah. Would you please introduce that? I think it's important to make a couple of quick clarifications before we vote for this uh, resolution.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. This is a proposal to expand the existing permit parking area near the Ferguson Canyon Trailhead. Uh, you can see on the, the screen here, the existing area is in red. The proposed expansion area is in orange. Uh, petition came in a, a month or so ago um, from a resident in that orange area. Um, we've introduced it and talked about it and how the, the required public hearings. So we're at the the meeting where we have to take final action on this. Um, a few questions that came up, um, by, by limiting on-street parking in this area. We are essentially uh, encouraging and, and requiring people using the trailhead to either park in the, the limited number of stalls at the trailhead. Or use the overflow area, which is dirt right now. That as, as you're aware, is slated for construction to be fully improved into a much larger parking area um, later um, in summer of twenty twenty-one. So at that time, there, we feel there'll be adequate parking to handle the, the trail, um, the trail users there. Our one recommendation that was discussed is while that lot is under construction, that the council consider taking um, a temporary action to put a hold on the permit parking so that when there's no parking lot or overflow area to park in, um, the trail users do still have somewhere to park. That would come via council action and public hearing at a later date, which we would coordinate with you. Um. And then the other uh, question that was raised, there are a number of questions raised about expanding the petition on Quicksilver Drive. Uh, staff has met with a, a resident that is interested in pursuing a petition there, but it does need to be a separate petition following the same process. Um, so we anticipate that we may see that here uh, relatively soon. Uh, and then the last thing was the comments raised about guest permits and being able to issue just a, a couple of guests permit tags per household rather than having to issue them e- every single time um, by request. Um, that is a text amendment we'll be bringing forward to the council in January. Uh, and then as was discussed in the, the council work session by Shane and, and Matt Ship. Uh, once a vote is taken, if this expanded area is approved, there will be some staff administration needed before the area is up and, and uh, in place, which would include um, sending out letters and making sure everyone gets the proper permits, um, ordering signs to be fabricated and installed in this site, which could take a few weeks, especially with the holidays here. Um, so it wouldn't be an immediate um, implementation of it, but we would get to work on getting those things taken care of right away. Any other questions for me?
Uh, well done. I think I hit all the points that we talked about in the work session and in previous meetings. So.
I got, I have a, just a one question, maybe Mike, sorry to catch you off guard, but um, can you maybe name, and I don't know if you know the, this answer, some other trailhead uh, parking areas in the valley that might have a small walk to a trailhead? Like maybe Bell's Canyon, I think has a couple of um, parking areas that you might have to walk to get to the.
Yeah, they do. Um, there's, there's another one just down the road from Bell Canyon. I'm blanking on the name, but you park in a parking area off of Wasatch and you, you walk through a neighborhood to get to the trailhead. Um, we did do some research and I, I don't have it right on hand right now, but there are other other cities, I think Mill Creek is one and Harriman is one, that have permit parking around trailheads right now. Um, so you know, having a, a trail parking area and then having to walk through a neighborhood to get to the trail is not th- this isn't the only case of that. You see it as close as Sandy and Mill Creek and um, and, and I think, you know, holiday to an extent with NEFS Canyon as well.
Yeah, NEFS got one on Wasatch. You park literally on Wasatch and have to walk up through to get to it.
And, and what's the, what's the name of the canyon? It's, it's giving me just north of Big Cottonwood Canyon near the uh, that's not NEFS. NEFS is, is in.
Hughes, Hughes?
It's Hughes. I think Hughes also has.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any further comments, questions? Hearing that, I'd consider uh, uh, a resol- or consider a, a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-eight. Uh.
Um, I move that we approve Resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-eight, designating a portion of Prospector Drive as a parking permit area.
It's been moved by Councilmember Michael. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
It's been seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Any further discussion or comments? Um, I, I do have o- one comment. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, gosh, no. Um, I, I know that we have some time constraints on this where it was a petri- peti- petition driven, however we want to phrase that. Um. I, I am struggling a little bit with the Fourteenth Amendment fair access for everybody. Um, and I would feel so much more comfortable if we were closer to construction of that paved additional parking. And there's some things that staff needs to clean up and then enforcing and not enforcing. Anyway, I just wanted to express that I'm a little bit torn about it, but I understand, uh, I understand the precedents in other cities and go ahead, Scott.
Uh, I am uh, I, s- slightly as well. I mean, I, I, I prefer that the streets be open for public parking, but I also understand that there are very justifiable reasons for restricting it. Um, I live in such an area myself. Um, certainly trailhead parking and that type of thing is. Uh, just for clarity's sake, in our discussion, we talked that it wasn't going to be an immediate thing because there is some time to actually get some signs ordered. We talked about getting plenty of signs ordered so people will be directed to the new parking as well. I think that's, that's imperative and that needs to be part of this. Um, also noting that in the month of January, we'll be doing some textual revisions to how the parking permit program actually works. I think that is necessary. And with those in place, then I can be supportive of it. Um. It's a, uh, we, we, we've come close. We get asked this on a regular basis. Having a program that works is important. So I'm uh, very interested in that discussion on the program mechanics in January. Um, but uh, again, with those, uh, with that being said, I can be supportive.
Thank you, Scott. And uh, I know uh, being at the uh, trailhead myself during the middle of the summer and uh, sitting in the uh, front yard of a resident and, and watching the challenges, I, I'm sympathetic. But also we represent all constituents. So Scott, your comments and Ty's comments are still very appropriate. And I think it's our job to make sure our implementation is, is, is appropriate and getting the overflow parking completed and communicating with everyone and uh, through wayfinding, et cetera. So um, I, I appreciate uh, both sides of that. This, these are always tough, but uh, uh, good comments and appreciate Christine representing her constituents and spending a lot of time literally uh, walking the area and viewing it and being sensitive to it. And uh, it's always tough because there's, there's always both sides. So appreciate everyone's involvement. Uh, the motion has been uh, moved and seconded. Uh, any last comments? Hearing that, I'll.
I may, I might just, I may make a couple last comments. Um, I think it's important to note that residents voiced a concern. They put flyers on every door in the neighborhood begging for help. The mayor and I went, sat at uh, the residence porch. We watched it. I had pre- prior to that had been sending emails of pictures of what the area looked like to both the mayor and, and um, Tim. We had an agreement with Salt Lake County to build a parking lot. We realized that it was not, uh, we weren't going to be able to use the funding for that overflow parking. And the mayor and Tim and I worked with UDOT and others to, and Wasatch Front Regional Council to bring that funding back to our city to get that overflow parking of seventy stalls. We've also talked with the Parks, Trails and Open Space Committee about a potential dog area, dog, dog park where this potentially could be located, um, should the residents of Cottonwood Heights like, like that. So I, I feel like um, I, I feel like should, should we end up with a dog park in District Four? I, I feel like we're, we are giving um, we're giving up something that maybe many people don't want, um, that nobody, no other district in Cottonwood Heights has wanted. And, and for that, I think many of those who live in the neighborhood are looking for um, safety for their children. And um, the ability to walk in their neighborhood without dogs being unleashed and doing other things. And as I stated prior, the distance from the overflow parking to the trailhead is point two miles. And hopefully with the Parks, Trails and Open Space recommendations, we might see some uh, bike uh, areas for bikes to be parked at the trailhead. So there could be alternative transportation measures being used to the trailhead. And uh, so and we all may not agree that this is a, a great idea, but I think it seemed to be the best solution. Maybe not everybody's happy, but sometimes the best solutions are ones where not all sides are happy. So, thank you.
No, thank. Well spoken, very well spoken, Councilwoman Michael.
Yep, I appreciate all those additional information and uh, actually for me, those additional pieces are very exciting. Yeah. All right, uh, I'll call for the vote. Uh. Uh, Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Uh, now a much more enthusiastic yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay, that's the last formal action item other than we do have uh, council work session and business meeting minutes from December first, twenty twenty. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar for those meeting minutes from December first.
So that.
The move by Councilmember Bruce to have a second.
I'll second that.
Then seconded by Councilmember Peterson. And for the comments, hearing none, I'd call for a, a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
More importantly, any opposed? Lack of the record show that it was unanimous. Um. That's the end of our uh, action item and business for tonight. Uh. Uh, I think uh, it's time to say happy holidays, be safe. Um, we'll see you in the. Um, we'll see you in the new year unless we have meetings in between. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move that we adjourn our business meeting.
It's been moved to adjourn.
For the end of this year, twenty twenty, which has been a wild one.
Yeah.
Second out.
Moved in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, just be unanimous.
Mayor, thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas, everyone. Good to see you again.